Yes. We have forty-five years. And that's twenty-four. I don't trust this person. Just pretend it's a hundred and forty.
Policy order. At this time, I'd ask Janice if you say wrong.
Here.
Where is Billman?
Here.
Can you meet me?
Here.
Here.
Carol Holmer?
Here.
Can you read the question?
Here.
Bradley Taylor?
Here.
Can you see him?
Here.
Here. We have a board in that business. The special meeting has been properly announced and published. Just to mention or point of clarification for why we're holding a meeting tonight, any board member can request a special meeting as long as we have a quorum. We did get a request at our last board meeting to hold a special meeting tonight, and we were able to have a quorum of the board, so that's why we're being installed by a board member. So, just a couple of housekeeping things tonight. We have a lot of communications again as we have the last couple meetings. We will limit discussion for three minutes per speaker. I'm asking everybody to be respectful. No cheering, no clapping. People speak, go and say what they want. And the other thing is, three minutes means three minutes. So my timer goes off, you're done, regardless if you're done speaking or not. Move on to item C, agenda order approval revision. Does anybody, any board member have anything to say tonight?
Yeah.
Anya?
Yeah. Can we identify the board members that brought the actions, so then we know who we should address? Same with the dozens. So right now, we don't know about board members who brought the special meeting, so it'd be helpful to ask them if we can direct their questions to whom we just go ahead and.
Amy Swanson requested the special meeting, and then after that request was made, Charlie had an addition to the agenda about contact tracing.
Okay, so then Charlie would be the contact year number letter A, and then Amy would be the letter B. And then can we update our vortex? It's just like when we have our agenda meetings, when we bring the agenda items together, so I identify what board members brought them.
For action, item A, after Amy had requested the special meeting, Charlie requested a discussion on COVID or on the tracing, contact tracing plan. And so at that time, I spoke with Joe, and we also talked to Amy about the possibility of listing in this COVID-19 discussion and the COVID, the entire COVID plan, so that any discussion would come up under the umbrella of the COVID plan would be addressed that way, since you're doing multiple things.
So could you use the word discussion, so then should we have it as a discussion?
No, her request, her request was an action item.
Okay, so then both questions will start separately. Okay, thank you.
Any other things for your agenda order?
Mr. President, I have a, I have a concern as well. I think we all want to get this settled and make a decision on this, but kind of to pick you that up, Ms. Fuzbee, we actually did not receive proper notice of this special meeting, because we did not receive any written notice twenty-four hours prior. My first awareness of this meeting actually was via, so we had emailed to some called State Health, called M. district. So, we did not receive the support. I know we discussed it through a meeting, and Amy tried to make a motion to basically have it at that, at that time, but there are procedures. It does say that we are supposed to have written notice twenty-four hours prior. So, just, just kind of a learning thing. I think we're all in agreement. We do want to carry on to hear this housekeeping thing. So, Amy?
I'd like to speak to that. It was posted before six o'clock. Actually, it was posted about four o'clock yesterday afternoon, which is more than twenty-four hours at that time. It was on Word docs. It was posted. It went out. And the reason it took a little while to get to that point is because David and myself and Joe tried to work out the language to make sure that you get it all right, so it'll be okay for tonight. So there has been twenty-four hours notice. Thank you.
Mr. President, I actually like to address that. That's not my issue with it. It's just that in order to have a special meeting, we're supposed to have written notice to all board members twenty-four hours prior, and that was not accomplished. I do know it was posted more than twenty-four hours, but we have these procedures in place for reasons, so we can run through the meeting, and the public is aware of us from our whole plan and premises.
I appreciate that, Glenn. But it's just, just a friendly. One thing I will say is that we, at our meeting Monday night, the entire board was asked about the meeting, and all indicated that they could attend the last special meeting this evening. So, I apologize if we did make an error. I do know that all board members at that time consent to that. Okay, at this time, we're going to move into our community communications portion of the meeting. Members of the people of the school district of Nama area are encouraged and appreciated by the board and administrators. Education is a partnership with schools, parents, and taxpayers, all being important participants. Members of the public are welcome to provide comments to the board during communications. I understand on the agenda. In-person communications will be allowed. This is a time to air concerns and express your opinions on issues. There should be no negative personal attacks against any individuals, including staff, board members, or administrators. I would also like you to indicate if you'd like a board, the board president or a member of the administration to respond to your concerns. I will note that we had thirteen community communications posted via email. What is the board's pleasure? I do have over twenty-something on staff here as well.
First, we did a meeting earlier this month that would be put into the record, and people, again, in the audience and watching screen can read them. They're online. We've all had the chance to read them. In the effort to get this as speedy as possible, move on to the people here in person, and just leave those into the record at a later time.
Is everybody okay with that? And direction? Okay, one thing I want to stress again tonight. I would expect and request that everybody be civil. Again, no cheering or clapping. Let people say the thing that is. It's going to be a long meeting with a lot of viewpoints on both sides. If there is somebody from the audience that is unruly and does not cooperate, we do have some equal that will be asked eventually to leave the room. So, I want to say that the way the meeting went Monday night with our board meeting and our email meeting, I was very impressed with how everybody handled that. Very cordial, very respectful, and I hope the same will be what happens tonight. So, clean communications. Once we start, we will take thirty minutes of communications. At that time, I will identify to the rest of the board how many are left, and the board will decide if we want to continue as we have been, or shorten the timeframe for each speaker after that, or probably want to handle that. In the past, we have continued and let people have the time, but we'll see how things go. Are there any additional communications that have not been turned into yet? Anybody else? Okay, board members, anything I forgot? Our very first speaker for tonight will ask you to come up to the mic, state your name. In our policy, it does specifically say that you have to say your address. Our policy states that you must state your municipality. Sorry, thanks for that. Name and municipality. So, if you're in by that township, township, I believe, will be fine for that. Our first speaker tonight is Damon Wilkinson.
Hello.
Janice?
My name is Damon Wilkinson. I have two children in the district and the city, going to fourth and sixth grade. Their goal then involves committing a detention in an option. I agree regarding a mask, it's been a hassle and is in the long hunt cart. What you forget is, this is the discussion of personal freedom. This is a discussion of what happens if you don't do this, and what am I willing to do to be a member of society? You already have any rules in place or requirements. Make one of the obvious ones with regards to that. I still place code thirty-seven, rule four, number eleven states. I don't file in school on this. Bring in evidence or a license division that's in physical fitness participates. Now, if there's nobody here on a physical, you get one, you cannot participate in that school sports. If you want to play football, you have to wear a helmet. We don't allow our children or family to say, "No, I'm good. I want to wear the helmet so I can see better, run faster a little bit, so people can see my face and know who." You wear a helmet, or you can't play football. When you get hit in the head, and that's no worse, we'd all say, "See, helps don't work." As the threat to our society is our fault, though, for both our children and for others. So, as far as our concerns for individual health, look at how that impacts others. Those we have to play today. The moistle of that class is someone with peanut allergy. We aren't told, we were told, don't eat moistle, peanut butter, and stuff. On a personal basis, again, one, we might get the law as a rule, but greater good that class needs to decide. So, people get sick of COVID, we'll take a hospital bed. We have a limited number of hospital beds. Once they're full, they're not off lock. And I can't say all that person's going to go and ask, "Did I get a shot? Did I get a shot?" How does it impact me? There's other patients that are not as well be found. This is how it works. We have a pool, we have a pool of hospital beds. Let's assume the worst in our hospital bed, they're full. You get a car, it's on the way home, you need surgery to ICU, but all of that is a full vacation. Now, now, this is your fault, but you're totally impacted. We can't put you in the hospital, aren't we? No, no, that thing's happening, you wake up. Did totally cause your death? No. Put it in there, yes. More importantly, we can take that to help and avoid the possibility that there's no way of preventing that. So, in case, now, if you get sick, then the school is going to shut down. Now, you're talking, go to school or daycare. I've been involved with your own recall period, you don't talk to everything else. Now, you can't hear your daughter's bones, now you can't work enough to pay. Masked health, I didn't see difficult all last year. I didn't say it was so well that at least one had two thousand pieces of glue during flu season. Year before, it's thirty-eight million. If in the end, you must raise the broken comfort actions, it could all go your personal burden for months to die. If I don't wear a mask, someone could get sick faster, put his system, and make other people die from the fall of the room. Now, I said good, is that I can't prove what happened, please put us in. I ask this for an accident, because it might cost someone else. One importantly, it's not going to hurt most of you, so it's not going to hurt. Therefore, there's no burden to you, but it may cost someone else a lot. That's far an idea to support and go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Casey Martin. Now, I'll announce someone on deck as well, so if you want to come up and sit down, or be prepared that way as well. Our next speaker after Casey will be Ryan Martin.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Casey Martin. I live at N sixty-eight, three zero five, fifth Street, Nama. I have four children currently in the SDMA district and two who recently graduated. I must admit, and I'm old sad and outraged that we are here again tonight. The data on both sides have been presented at length. The community has spoken. The ballots have been cast. The decision hasn't been made, yet here we are. I do not have a bunch of credentials behind my name. I'm not up to date with all the latest and greatest news articles or statistics, and I don't have all the answers. But I'll tell you what I do have. A mother's intuition and a bunch of questions to those pushing this. Questions like, what are we doing? Final, thanks, Adam. When will this insanity stop? Why is the optional mask policy not sufficient? Masks are not banned. You still have the choice to wear your mask and take your shot. If those things work like we say they do scientifically, why are you trying to force your choice on me and my children? I believe, if you believe in what you are pushing so hard to follow the CDC and public health guidelines, why are you just wearing a mask today? Why are you not also physically distanced by six feet? Do you believe only half the science and the guidance? What is the magical about this piece of cloth on your face? How do the air droplets and spit holes go through the mask one way but not the other? What is scientific phenomenon? What happened to our God given immune symptoms? Why don't those work anymore? Why does the goalposts keep moving and moving and moving? When have we ever responded like this in the history of mankind to a virus that is not going away and has a survival rate of ninety-nine point whatever percent? What is the endgame? When will you all finally be happy and let humanity get back to living? As a mother, I am begging you. Do not reverse the decision previously made. We are hard working, loving, tasking parents, who are trying to be right by our kids. We did the thing. We complied. We flattened a curb to spend eighteen months, and that is enough. Do not take our rights away. Do not give our district administrator or public health director rights that only parents should have. They're going to the jugular, hitting us where it hurts, writing things that are in accord to us, like keeping our kids in schools and shutting down our beloved football program. You're sickening. We are in a dogfight. Thirty days will likely turn into thirty more and thirty more and thirty more. They won't stop. That is clear. Dave, Mark, Angie, Connie, Clint, we put them in those chairs for a reason. Do not get battle weary. Stay in this fight with us. Too much is at stake. No matter what happens, we appreciate you and we're grateful for what you're doing. I know your position is incredibly difficult, and I'm praying for your families. Thank you.
Thank you. All your thoughts. You see yourself on both sides. Ryan? On deck is Gretchen Yankel.
My name is Ryan Martin. We live in the Nama district. It's sad to me that I'm speaking to you all once again regarding mandatory masking in our school district. At this point, we can only draw the conclusion that there are individuals employed by the county school administration and some who serve on the SDMA board that have no appetite to uphold the feedback and desires of the majority. We are all quite aware of the recently failed attempts at mandatory masking, and the majority has spoken. This is insanity, and everyone involved in gathering us here again this evening should be ashamed of themselves for continuing to squander valuable time and resources to oppose recently made decisions. So, why are you, why are we here? I can only speculate that it may be due to some statements quoted by Mr. Joseph Zdowski stating that circumstances have changed. Over the past two weeks, East Wisconsin and county have continued to accelerate. Hospitals now have fewer beds available, unquote. The rest of the statement is located on Facebook for those interested. Was it intentional leaving out that fewer beds available in hospitals is largely due to staffing shortages and not COVID-related, or was that just a well-placed implication? Maybe we are here because of statements made this week by former superintendent Christine Stratten, who was quoted saying, "I do feel your recent decision relative to COVID-19 impacts our entire community and places our youngest citizens at tremendous risk," unquote. Although I appreciate the perspective of Districts Zdowski and this Stratten, I would have to respectfully disagree with their inferences according to statistics published by the Wisconsin Department of Health Services. I've provided you all the copies of that, and have multiple more if anyone would like them. Here are the facts. As of August twenty-second, N county seventy-eight case rate has plummeted from seventy-eight to seven during the past nine months. In total, less than eight point five percent of Wisconsin nights under the age of nineteen have had COVID-19. In total, zero point zero six percent of Wisconsin children between the ages of zero nine have ever been hospitalized by COVID-19. In total, zero point one percent of Wisconsin children between the ages of ten and nineteen have been hospitalized by COVID-19. Zero percent of COVID cases in Wisconsin are individuals under the age of fifty-nine that have resulted in intensive care visits. Zero percent of COVID cases in Wisconsin are individuals under the age of nineteen that have resulted in death. During the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-two season in Wisconsin now, three children died from influenza. I would ask those making bold and fearful statements around East Wisconsin, are the facts posted by the WBHS line, or do we just have very different understandings of statements like accelerated rates and tremendous risk? According to the facts and public statistics, not only should we not be discussing mask mandates, but one could also argue as to why are we even still discussing COVID-19 mitigations for those who statistically are least impacted. Thank you.
Thank you. Gretchen Yankel. Our next speaker will be Chad Darfman.
Gretchen Yankel, I have two children in the school district and I live in Nama. Please ask them on our schools. I've been listening to those of you that want masks optional. I've been trying to balance the scale with masks required on one side and masks optional on the other. It is not balanced, no matter which way you look at it. There's a lot of choice involved. You say masks are uncomfortable. She's more comfortable mask. I wear one all day at work. It's fine. My kids are fine with wearing them at school too. You say PCR tests are not accurate. Then, wearing a mask is even more important protection from illness, and this is not an argument and a debate about mask wearing. You say choice belongs to the parents. One, parents can't choose to send their child to school without pants on, and that's not even a public health issue. Two, it's a public school, and our tax dollars go to pay the salaries of professionals. Our superintendent has presented his professional, well-researched opinion that we requested. Why wouldn't we listen to it? Three, your choice as a parent of your child does not likely get to the danger to health and safety of my child. Four, you can choose to attend school virtually if you don't want your child to wear a mask instead of wearing these masks. Five, you can choose not to wear masks at home. Trying to balance that with all the sickness and disclosures and overwhelmed hospitals and extensions of disruptions and potential for new variants that comes with only some children that wear masks in our schools, it's impossible. Let's just attack the virus and get this mess done with instead of attacking each other and continuing the suffering. These require masks and without masks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chad Darfman. Kelly Hayes will be on deck. Reminder, while he's speaking, please, I know it's hard sometimes not to act, but I appreciate the board here. Chad?
Hi, my name is Dr. Chad Darfman. First, I want to say that we all have the science on whether masks work or don't work. There's science on both sides of this debate. You bear really only one side of the right.
Just make sure you're speaking into the mic, Chad. You're very strong. I promise. Okay, resume.
No, 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 pass through. First, I want to say that we all have the science on whether masks work or don't work. There's science on both sides of this debate. You bear only one side of the right. Arms. Masks don't work for aerosol viruses. Now, the data is all of you. Two weeks ago, the data is clear on that. To decide this as a mask work, awesome. I'm glad that you think masks work, and no one's taking that by the way from us. Those of us that say masks don't work, great. We don't have to wear them right now, and no one's taking that by the way from us. And those that think that masks work, I have to ask the obvious question. If those masks work, then please wear them. You should be protected because masks work. It logically shouldn't matter. If a person next to you doesn't have a mask on, you have your time. They work, then they work. Protected, period. Same with vaccine. If the vaccine works, then you're protected. End of story. Why are you pushing your agenda on the best of us if your science is correct? You should have no worries. You are protected according to your science. The problem that I see is that you must not trust your science one hundred percent, because if you did, you shouldn't be happy that you can still wear your mask and get your vaccine. You should be good. There's an agenda greater than masks and data vaccine. It's all about it. It's a power trap. This guy says we care more about you than you care about us. We are not asking you to care about us. We have our science, we know our risks. We are not that worried about the same data that you look at. Thank you for your concern, but please take care of you. Take care of us. We trust our science. We trust yours as much as we trust ours. Keep the best of us.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Kelly Hayes. Dana Wonsor, I believe, is on deck.
Kelly Hayes, I'm from Wheeler. I've been asked to speak on behalf of several Nama school district presidents. We do not consent to unilateral masking our children. The decision for our children to wear masks or not lies solely with the parents of these children. The Emergency Use Authorization twenty-one USC Section three-six-zero BVP dash three clearly outlines the parameters of government and for rights for citizens. It clearly states to date masks are authorized for use by the general public as investigational products under Emergency Use Authorization, the UWA. They are not an approved product and are referred to in the law as unapproved products because they have not been fully tested and approved for use by the FDA. Under the federal law, no person can be forced to wear a mask slash face covering. The law provides recipients of a product authorized for use under it, UWA, can refuse to take the product. The mask slash face covering is a product. It also states that face masks should not be used in place of surgical masks or filtering face piece respirators to provide protection such as with barrier protection, antimicrobial, or antiviral protection, prevention, or reduction, or respiratory protection. It's way clear that this board should not have the authority to force our children to wear masks. That is a decision that we, as citizens of the United States of America, have the unalienable right to make for our households. Let me also remind you of a recent Wisconsin Supreme Court ruling which states our local health department officials do not have the legal authority to close our schools. In closing, we do not give consent to this school board or the health department to violate established laws and legally force masks on our children.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Dana Wonsor. On deck will be Brian T. King.
Hello, I'm Dana Wonsor. I live in the town of Reseda. Thank you all for being here today. I do want to say that I, as much as everybody else around here, is tired of wearing masks. I don't enjoy wearing a mask at all, but I wear one because a mask is not just a mask. A mask is our signal to our community that we care about their health and safety. Wearing a mask shows that we care about all of our children, those who cannot get vaccinated and all the people who have an increased risk of contracting and dying from COVID-19. A mask is not just a mask. A mask is what will keep our schools open this year, and so if our children are under, under the age of twelve, can and do get vaccinated, it is the best tool that we have to keep schools open. A mask is not just a mask. A mask is how we're going to beat COVID-19, when paired with vaccinations and with hygiene measures. You have been wearing masks for over a year now, because it helps with reducing transmission, and will be what helps us to beat this disease. We have to wear a mask in order to not, a measure would have to wear a mask. A mask is not just a mask. A mask gives us our overall freedom. There have been votes saying that it takes away our personal freedoms, but ultimately, wearing one is about our collective and overall freedom for all people to live safely in our community and attend our students safely. But abusing to wear a mask in the name of personal freedom is like saying that you have the personal right and freedom to shut fire in a crowded building, that your personal freedoms to not wear a mask outweighs the overall freedoms of our community to have a quality and safe in-person education to be out in public safely. A mask is not just a mask. For you, the board, a mask mandate For you, the board, a mask mandate is your signal that you are upholding your vision of providing an educational experience to all students that is, and I hope from your vision statement, rigorous, culturally valid, helpful, and engaging. It is you live in more value of community by demonstrating the importance of the overall freedom and right to a fair and equal education. A mask is not just a mask. A mask mandate from you is signal that you support your teachers, administrators, and superintendents whom you prefer from on Monday and who encourage a mask mandate. Please listen to those folks who are on the ground doing this work and do your part to support them because a mask is not just a mask. It is how we work with this community.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Speaker Brian T. Teague. On deck will be Scott Dyser.
Good evening. My name is Brian T. Allen, 716153 South, Knottley. And I teach biology at the University of South. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'll attempt to be brief. I attended Monday's evening's meeting. And I felt that there were two important points that did not receive enough attention in the discussion around the school district COVID pandemic. The first is the purpose of wearing masks. I'm wearing masks right now for two reasons. The first is that it protects me. But the second, and the last important reason, is that it protects you. We know that COVID, that people with COVID are infectious for several days before they have symptoms. I could have COVID right now. And if I do, my mask helps keep me from spreading it to the other people in this room. My wearing a mask is not just about my personal risk tolerance. It is also about protecting those around me who may be more vulnerable to this deadly disease than I am. The second thing which is mainly about Monday was the number of contradictory statements that were all presented as fact. Please, please do not take this to mean that these statements are equally likely to be true. Or worse, that the truth is unknown. Expertise matters. Training and experience matter. Data and evidence matter. And in the end, everyone wants the best, safest, and most meaningful education for our students. I urge you to follow the unanimous advice of educators, administrators, pediatricians, and public health experts as you decide if COVID mitigations are appropriate for this whole.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Scott Dyser, will leave. Alex Hall is on deck.
Whoa, I got a stall. My name is Scott Dyser. I live in R. 4810, 430th Street. Which is that last random half-while of River Heights Road that you found in the lobby. I'm here.
Step a little bit closer.
A little closer?
Yeah.
I'm here representing the hundreds of people who believe in masks and aren't here. We have enthusiastic non-masters here. The many people who think masks are a good idea but who go while they're coming to school board meetings aren't here. A vote here, yes, a vote of the board or the people that come. But it's not a vote of the people of the district. It's a vote of those who show up and have a passionate interest in this stuff. I would point out that today's Dunn County News, which came into air today, has an article down here on the front page where the chair of the Dunn County Board and the chair of the, what do we use it says? County's Health and Human Services Board have appealed to all residents want to get the vaccine and to wear masks because the COVID vaccine, the COVID infection rate is increasing. I urge the board to do the right thing and respect the views of the many of those people in town who go down to school board meetings but who believe in the value of masks in protecting our students, our faculty, and our staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alice Hall. On deck will be Julie Beston.
Hi, everybody. I'm Alice Hall. I live in Menominee. My son's a sophomore. I'm a physician and a biology lecturer. I spent my entire career caring for people and helping them understand how their bodies work. There's been a lot of incorrect information presented at these meetings, so I'd like to share you a bit about what our best evidence shows. Number one, 78 case averages are increasing in our county and neighboring counties. It's in the handout. I have extra copies for those who are interested. Number two, PCR tests are highly accurate. They're gold standard diagnostic tests we've used for decades for a variety of infections. There are some combination flu and COVID tests out there that they all tell you which germ the test is positive for. Good cases are not really counted as COVID cases. Number three, cloth and cervical masks do not cause high levels of carbon dioxide or low levels of oxygen. The quote Stanford study was a paper written by a single man who didn't even work for Stanford, and they since sued him for saying he did. The paper itself was full of errors that would not be apparent to people without significant medical training but which completely invalidated his points. Also, the recently published study reporting high CO2 levels with kids with masks and retractors. As many authors were questioned about some of their methods, it didn't make sense. They had no explanation. So their findings were either erroneous or fraudulent. All credible evidence supports that masks are safe, which fits with real-life experience of healthcare workers who go through work. Four, bacteria that grow on a mask come from your own mouth and nose. They were already in you. You should wash your regularly. Listen, you should brush your teeth regularly and actually be fine. Number five, most importantly, masks do decrease transmission of COVID-19, and they work best when everyone wears them called universal masking. We have a lot of data that is credible to support this. A recent analysis looked at the effectiveness of different strategies. It found that for a situation with a baseline of no mask risk with about 10% or 1 in 10 chance of getting infected, me myself wearing a mask decreases my risk to 1 in 26, or about 4%. But, if everyone is masked, then the risk falls to immediately 1 in 91, or about 1%. You can see how the difference between 1 in 10, which is about 2 kids per class, versus 1 in 26, which is about 1 kid per class, versus 1 in 91, or 1 kid in 3 or 4 classes potentially getting infected, make a huge difference in viral transmission in our schools. We need to be prudent and enact a mask requirement, just as we did all last year, to help our students stay in school for in-person learning and to keep our staff in their hands and feet.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Julie Beston. On deck, Jim Leach.
Hi, I'm Julie Beston. I live in Menominee and I have a child at the Hill School. And I just wanted to say, I've heard a lot of arguments from anti-mask quotes saying that both of us who are for masks are trying to shut down businesses in the county and close things down, and it's the exact opposite. I love shopping downtown at local businesses. I love going out to eat. And I want to be able to continue doing that. So I want to keep the COVID rates in our community low so that our healthcare system is able to move on and so that we can keep all of those restaurants and restaurants open. So, I encourage you to keep that in mind, but we're not necessarily advocating here. I want to say thanks to many of the anti-mask people who are here. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Leach. On deck, Simone Perrin.
Hi, I'm Kim Leach from Menominee, Wisconsin. A mother of a high schooler and a family member who would both appreciate and give her reverence this year. I think it is time to try a different approach. It has been well for a year and a half yet we keep doing the same things to get the same discouraging and futile results. Our lives are being driven by fear and division from every level. What can we do to work together with optional masking? Studies have shown there may be a link between low levels of vitamin D and the severity of COVID symptoms for individuals. Could SDMA and/or the county offer testing of students and faculty for low vitamin D levels? Or could the county and/or the school use COVID funds to provide D, C, and zinc supplements to keep students and faculty healthy to give their immune systems a natural boost? Could ivermectin along with the above vitamins be prescribed without an appointment using the nurse hotline? The World Health Organization's list of essential medicines includes ivermectin. And a meta-analysis of 49 trials of ivermectin treating COVID in humans have all shown positive results. And medical doctors are including vitamin D, C, and zinc in the COVID recovery process. Dr. Colleen Huber states ivermectin is almost made for COVID because it blocks the three parts of the spike protein and it blocks viral replication and it won't let it into the human cell. Plus, it has a wonderful safety profile. 3.7 million doses have been given since 1975. And in all ages, children were fine. No pregnancies were lost. Lastly, wondering what Dunn County schools really are for getting things back to mask-free? Is it zero deaths? Flat number? What would that look like with numbers of hospitalizations? Since the CDC is recommending a transition to another FDA-authorized PCR test that can decipher between the flu and COVID, can we stop testing people with no or mild symptoms and recommend quarantine and offer ivermectin through the nurse hotline? What is going to be different in four weeks? Let's take control over fear with some common sense protocols by staying healthy, washing our hands, and staying home if we are sick. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next board speaker. I'm Allison. We've reached our 30-minute mark. I would ask, I'm sorry, just to stand. So, what is the board's pleasure? I have 24 left. I'm finally flowing through with the rest of the board.
I would like to hear it.
Okay, so we'll continue on. Simone. On deck, Penny Burstett.
I think I'm saying my name right.
You're welcome.
Hello, my name is Simone Perrin. I'm the mother of two boys who go to Wakanda from the north of Menominee. I'm here in support of the mask order and hope that it is not only implemented, but that it is extended until the second wave COVID is over. To the members of the school board. Hi. Hi. How are you? Before you take this all-important vote tonight, I would like for you to take a moment and remember why you ran for this office. Did you run to protect personal liberties of a few loud community members? Or did you run to protect the health and safety?
Your side, Simone. Audience members, please.
Or did you run to protect the health and safety of the school students, teachers, staff, and therefore, the health and safety of the whole community? Other schools are the heart of rural communities like Menominee. Every student, teacher, and staff is connected to every member of this community, and your decision today will affect us all. These are not normal times. No one really wants to wear masks. They just don't. But no one wants to get sick either. No one wants their family or neighbors to get sick. We all want this to be over. We all want things to stop being canceled. To not have to quarantine. To not miss every important milestone. We all want the same things. It's just a matter of how we get there. That's that very first part. Masks can be annoying, but they work. They slow down the spread of viruses. And whether you choose to believe it or not, this particular virus is making more and more people sick every day, including kids. And it's not only, it's only giving birth to the worst of the worst of it. I hope you, members of our school board, can look beyond the noise being fed to about personal liberty and freedom and make the decision to support the will of your superintendent, your county health officials, and vote for the health and safety of your community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Penny Burstett. On deck, Lucy Rooney. We'll be right back.
Hello. I am Penny Burstett. I live in E. 6545, 836 Avenue in Calhoun. I currently have junior in the district. I'm a business owner. I'm a taxpayer, and I'm a previous school board member. I am not really going to talk about masking today other than to say I am pro-optional mask. What I'm here to talk about is how the district and the board are handling the situation. I respect that this is a constantly changing situation that the board is going to have to continue to address as things come up. But with that being said, the original five-force mask optional vote was just a conundrum. My thought is that the district allows, that follows Policy 165, exhibit first paragraph under Board Acts and Law, which states, once a decision has been made by the board, members agree to support the decision. Individual board members have a right to disagree, but once a decision has been made, we agree to support the district implementation. With that being said, I would also like to remind the board and the community that superintendent is the board's only employee. The board chooses the superintendent to oversee the VDA operations of the district and to support the board in an advisory role. It is the board's job to make a sound decision for the students and the staff. With that said, at one point, this SDMA go back to focusing on educating its students. The board and district have been so concerned with social justice issues, it's time to vote to be mask optional and get back to letting our teachers teach and our kids learn.
Thank you. Our next board speaker, Lucy Rooney. On deck, Karen Johnson.
I'm Lucy Rooney. Hi. I've been in Menominee for 44 years.
See right into the mic. We see that now.
Despite overwhelming evidence of the masking of children not only confirms no benefits, but also results in substantial harm, there are still people who think it should be handed. They produce no evidence in support of their belief because there is none. Yet they cling to the notion of forcing children to wear muzzles as if they were rabidating. It's just a logic. If I were a cynic, I would assume they did for this policy because keeping everyone in a state of constant panic is useful for advancing some agenda. But I try never to attribute to analysis what it can be explained by ignorance. So I will assume they are adherent of the facts. The most important fact about COVID is that it poses no threat to 99% of the population, which is very good news. And that the threat to children is statistically zero, which is even better news. Why then would we force masks on the children when the threat to them from COVID is practically nonexistent? Some proponents have suggested that putting masks on children makes the adults feel safe. But it is not the children's job to make adults feel safe. If adults are afraid of COVID, they can take the vaccine and wear a mask to keep their kids out. All of this would be true even if masks caused any harm, but this is not the case. Prolonged mask wearing decreases the oxygen the child breathes in and increases the carbon dioxide. Prolonged mask wearing causes headaches in many people. For those who wear glasses, masking can also impair vision as trying to breathe while the parent masks causes the lungs to block up. Why wouldn't anyone advocate a policy that places these extra burdens on children who are supposedly in school to learn? Forcing masks on children teaches them to regard the world as a dangerous place, to fear and mistrust other people, to believe that everyone they encounter is a potential killer who's waiting to infect them with a deadly virus. The psychological advantage being done to children who this kind of fear monitoring is unconscionable. Our children are infinitely valuable human beings who don't deserve any of the garbage that the world's putting through in the last year and a half. This has to end.
Thank you. On deck, Margaret Paulson.
That's okay. We have a lot of names to go through tonight. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can hear your name on this wall.
Okay. Karen Danielson, 815 Bevlyn, Knottley. At the annual meeting and in human, references have been made about what was perceived as low numbers of cases in the county. And because the numbers are low, these mitigation measures were deemed unnecessary. But I would remind you, those are not numbers. They are people. They are someone's grandma, their favorite aunt, their cousin, their neighbor, or their child. People who have been affected, some of them severely, by this virus. A virus that is still here and now more contagious than ever. If we can do anything as a school and as a community to make sure that others are not exposed, not affected, not sick, why wouldn't we? And how will we? And how will we know it works? We'll be able to spend time with grandma, see our favorite aunt at Christmas, wave to a friendly neighbor, and tuck our kids into bed at night. Please, let's put measures in place that will make sure what we're doing, that we are doing what we can to keep each other safe and to keep our loved ones from becoming another number.
Margaret Paulson. On deck, Wyatt Krueger.
Hello, my name is Margaret Paulson. I live in Amity. So, I grew up on a farm in North Dakota.
Get right into the mic.
Sorry, can you hear me better now? So I grew up on a farm in North Dakota and was really excited to escape the wind and the cold, the bitter cold anyway, and come to Amity to practice internal medicine. And it's been a great privilege of mine to care for our community members, see the clinic and the hospital setting, our loved ones, right? And with my job, I've also cared for COVID patients, often COVID patients who don't leave the hospital alive. And what I hear over and over from them is a theme of, "Gosh, I didn't think I was going to get sick. I certainly didn't think I was going to die, and I wish I would have been safer." And that we can't change the past, but what we can do is probably impact the future. A super marriage, tearing the mask.
Thank you. Wyatt Krueger. On deck, Chelsea Luttrell.
Good evening. My name is Wyatt Krueger. I live in the town of Dunn. I'm here in support of the optional mask policy that we have in place right now. I've heard around that word already. I'm here on a couple of personal issues with some of this talk that's been going on about how masks are either, I'm sorry, how masks are either really good or really bad or in-between. In my job, I have been tested in multiple styles of masks to be able to be going on a silica plant and into a silica crusher. We've all heard in the past number of years about all the silica mines in Wisconsin and how bad they are for our lives. I've been tested with luck, and I cannot go into those facilities. And I have been medically approved for one type of mask that goes into those facilities. And all the masks that we wear or need to wear in and out of these facilities around town, schools don't stop silica, and silica is much larger, obviously, because it's a dust. It's not a virus. The virus is .125 microns. All these masks, even the ones that we're wearing, cloth, surgical, N95, we would have to tape around our entire face, and it still gets through. You need a respirator with a rubber gasket and two canisters to be able to go into a silica crusher. That's my personal experience. I'm not going to tell you what you should or shouldn't wear for your personal choice. My personal choice is that wearing one is going to be worse because it affects us what we're breathing out and what we're supposed to be trying to get out of our body. The other thing I'd like to address is that on Monday night, words were brought up from teachers in the annual meeting room. This is a quote, "We are the parents of your kids when you drop them off at school." No. You are an educator for my child when I drop them off at school. I am the parent. I will make health choices based on my decision, based on my doctor's recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Chelsea Luttrell. On deck, it would be Dennis Spader.
Good evening, and thank you for your time once again. My name is Chelsea Luttrell. I'm a resident of the city of Amity and a parent of Peter Gardner. I love this community. I was raised to be a helper. I'm raising my son to be a helper. And in this town, there are so many amazing helpers. When I look at social media pages, such as @happeningaroundamity, our community is ready to remove all the input loss texts, even rolling roosters, people are paying to someone else's coffee or groceries when something comes up, keeping us updated on the KFC situation, and wallets and valuables in tax, and supporting families and businesses when disaster strikes. When my friends and neighbors are in need, I make them a meal, and I ask, "What can I do to help?" But all of that comes after something unavoidable has happened. In this moment, though, there was an opportunity to be able to help proactively, minimize the amount of damage despite us giving to the community. Our children need the team and predictability in their lives to be secure and to focus on their education. They need access to their friends. As a community, we need kids in schools so we are asking them to go to their house, to pay their bills, keep their businesses open, and help improve our local economy, and to support our medical community who is exhausted. As such, I'm asking you to please consider three ways to proactively help our children and the community as a whole tonight. Number one, please follow the recommendation provided by Superintendent Ziratsky and hold in support of masking requirement on the table tonight. Number two, please reconsider utilizing school nurses to assist in contact tracing to speed up the efficiency so that kids can stay in school more consistently. And number three, will you determine the application for a legament that was approved la manut? Number four, please consider adding additional mental health support structures to help students adapt to all the challenges they face in COVID and COVID-19. Thank you for your thanks.
Thank you. This time, Dennis Spader. On deck, Dana Lightness. May he take your mic right off, Dennis, this is hard to hear.
So why am I here? I don't really want to be here. I'm an old man, an optimist. And that's probably why I'm here. Because I don't want to be here because I am old and I'm vulnerable just because of my age. I have several other medical things that I'm vulnerable for. So I need to be careful myself, as all old people do. And as well, the reason I say it is why I'm not counting on the past. Because why would we even wear a mask? Make ourselves more vulnerable. That's the whole point of masks, if you ask me. For the anti-maskers, I just have to ask you, why do all the medical people wear masks? For themselves or for their patients? It's for gold, really. You don't want to transfer. That's critically important. As the president of Optimus Club, our medical advisor advised us last April, I think it was, just have some goals, which we began, for when we would come back in session. Otherwise, it's soon, and that's not very fun. It's doable. And the goals were a 5% positivity rating and three cases per day on a seven-day-long average. I talked to our medical advisor today. We were at 33 cases last week, 22 cases this week, and it is going up. And the reason is not because of the original COVID, because of the virus, because of breaking through, the vaccination, and the reinfection. And I know personally, cases like that. Another reason I'm here is I have grandkids. Some here in school who are vulnerable and must wear masks to protect themselves. They need all of our help to not get this. Because it is extremely dangerous. And I have younger kids that I can stand behind at 10, 7, and 5 if I am safe. And not a bear, they're going to be close if I'm not safe. That's why I hold our kids out and get tested on a regular basis. At least when I give out in cases like this, I can have some insurance cover. I'm reasonably safe. I have vaccinated. But I'm also reasonably safe because I have tested regularly. You have a responsibility to set my professional life here as starting off, we have children abusing their black box. And there is real cases of neglect other than just physical neglect.
Thank you, boys. Our next speaker, Dana Lightness. On deck, Kelly Cameron.
Good evening. I am Dana Lightness. I'm in the town of Amity. First of all, thank you to the board members for voting for mask optional a week ago. It's actually sad that we actually have to sit here again at this meeting and talk about masks versus education. It was suggested at the annual board meeting that the school should hire more mental health counselors for depression happening in our schools. And I agree. There is a mental health crisis, but here's an idea. How about take the germ-infested masks off the kids? Let them breathe fresh air. Let them play sports and exercise. Help the kids get proper vitamins, vitamin D, zinc, and vitamin C to boost their immune system, and also let them see each other's smiles. I feel that this is a science that should be following. I'd also like to hint the idea about the ivermectin. Many doctors have said that is a, is a, sorry. But ivermectin for the nurses. And let it be the person's choice whether they like to mask or not mask. It should not be a worst thing. And let, you know, let the parents have a choice in that. So I know Katie isn't here, but I was just wondering, under what authority does she have to shut down stores if the school board doesn't make mask mandatory? So that was my other question. So keep on here. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Hammer. On deck, Rachel Henderson.
I'm Kelly Hammer, from Amity. Here's a powerful motivator. If you make USA things, you let harmless say or do. I sat through two board meetings, and what I have walked away with is that people are fearful. And let that fear come to control and manipulation. I want my kids and grandkids to be in love with life, to live their life to the fullest. And they can't do that if they're afraid of going to go around their grandpa or someone in their school. So then I ask myself, what is this that they're doing to our kids for the short term and long term as far as their mental state? Because once you fan the flames of fear, it stays with you. Ask anyone who struggles with fear and anxiety. I believe we're playing a fool's game with making our kids wear a mask for a virus that's close way less than 1%. If masks and vaccines worked, why is ISOL, who's 87% vaccinated, having an outbreak again? If masks really worked this past 18 months, why are people still getting COVID? I want my children to be free, not so stunted by fear and control. And yes, this is about control. Because where there is fear, control is closely behind. None of us gets out of this cycle alive. Reality is, we will all die someday, and we have no control over that. But we do have a choice. Make the most of it every day if we're given by letting go of fear and control and letting our children be free for masks and vaccines. Quit using our kids as pawns in a chess game.
Our next speaker, Rachel Henderson. Bobby Saki from Dallas.
Hi, I'm Rachel Henderson. I live in the town of Dunn. I have two children who attend Amity schools. They're both, under 12, can't be vaccinated. We've had a lot of discussion about people's beliefs on masks and their beliefs on the seriousness of COVID. And I want to make, take back off, I think, a slightly different point. You know, I think about COVID, and we talk about the low death rates, and we're all really grateful for low death rates. But there's a lot of non-death outcomes for families that get COVID, when people in the community get COVID. And we know a few things now. We've been dealing with this disease for 18 months, and we know the last school year, the mitigation efforts that we put in place were effective. That we kept spread low, that we took care of our children. We also know that school districts in other parts of the country have started already. And a lot of them have mask mandates, and a lot of them did. And we've seen things that have happened. We can read the news, and we can see the results of what's going on in those school districts. And we've seen the spread in school districts without mask requirements. When we have a lot of community spread, there are impacts that are not bad. There are impacts that are unhappy families, but there's also economic impacts. I mentioned at the meeting earlier this week that my son contracted COVID. Our family lost income because we were quarantined. He would have lost more income if he hadn't been able to keep my other son healthy and keep him from having to quarantine for longer. He had to lay off her babysitter because it wasn't safe to have her come to our house anymore. She lost income. That's just one example of one family that contracted COVID in the school system. That is happening over and over and over against all our communities. He didn't die, basically fine. He's recovered. He's a healthy boy. None of us have lost that faith. But we have a lot of loss in our income and in our richness of our lives because of the things we had to give up and cancel. And this just keeps happening over and over. And we know that we can stop that spread. We know that we can do things to lessen that. And we can lessen those non-death impacts. Because I think we all agree that dying is not the only bad thing that can happen to us.
Thank you, Bobby Saki. Our next speaker is John Michael Starling.
My name is Bobby Saki. I live in the town of Cedar in Amity. Our three children graduated from Amity, and my husband teaches in the district. When is enough enough? In the beginning, the idea of masks was to slow the spread. The virus has since circulated all throughout every country in our world. It is already everywhere and likely on this microphone. Last year's students and staff wore masks, and people still got COVID. The reality is that what protects someone from getting COVID is their own immunity, not a mask. Look up Stephen Petty online. He is a BP expert, and he will tell you that. I have heard someone use the analogy of wearing masks as like prohibiting smoking and therefore allow us for our constitutional rights to be violated. These two scenarios are simply not the same. Smoking isn't that harmful, as well as secondhand smoke. But people are still allowed to make the choice to smoke. Breathing is not harmful to others and should not require people to wear a mask. Some have said ignoring public health recommendations may be liable as a board. The fact is, our public health administrator, no offense, does not have a medical degree, medical training, and therefore not able to treat single patients. Public health relays the CDC recommendations, but those recommendations do not supersede our ungovernable constitutional right to breathe freely and to choose as individuals or parents whether or not to wear a mask. The CDC recommendations came from flawed PCR tests that cannot differentiate between influenza or COVID per the CDC website. I was informed the CDC hospital protocols for reporting COVID patients do not require a test at all. This is not science. I was also told, excuse me, CDC testing, recording, and recommendations are not based on science. We, the majority of electors of Amity, are demanding that our constitutional rights stop being trampled on. Please keep that in mind.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Graham. Please hold your applause. John Michael Starling. Sarah Lambert Freeman is on deck.
Oh, you need this. Can you hear me? So decisions to require masks or not is at this point pretty straightforward. Conditions on the ground have changed drastically since the last decision facing another large national state, now local, in different cases. Hospitalization has followed that. Community masking is general right now. We managed this by very well last year using the mask department for students to much smoothly reduce risk, stay open, have our kids in school. There's no real dispute between consistent finding that masks reduce spread and practice. Specifically, does somewhat increase increasing viral levels substantially decrease outcomes because they lock the liquid droplets to the virus travels. And there, it frees them. And I do wish there was a good option. We saw research on ivermectin for treatment, for example, which turned out to be We saw research on ivermectin for treatment, for example, which turned out to be flawed. It's resulted in a broad, it's unclear of course at all, much less sort of protective role. It's definitely not approved for use, we think in those, isn't going to help us now. Our effective option for schools is universal masks. The efficient matters is no longer efficacy or our feelings on masks. Well, matters, I think, in terms of the arguments that remain and are thus disputed, is whether the mandate is justified or not for universal masks. I understand the personal freedom of objective on safety is considered a core principle, we need to watch that closely. Frankly, if that were the problem, masks would be the least of our concerns. Schools are responsible for their student safety, period. For that reason, a number of considerations make sense, and they have been consistently used and upheld as reasons. Body coverings, the new vaccines are mandated, with exceptions that are with a basis for specific reasons. The argument that masks mandates are an infringement only makes sense for opposed to other safety requirements, including things like mandatory COVID. Those are equally infringing, but they're not opposed for clear reasons. So the argument, it's not about personal freedoms per se, the argument is about masks specifically. Because it's very clear that masks are a question of safety, that's sufficient justification for any school. One of the most important immediate benefits to this choice is a huge decrease in the risk that nearby students have to be quarantined whenever there's a positive test in a classroom. Given national and recent community spread, that much is a given. A temporary mask requirement for students is the decision that makes sense right now. We'll have to re-maximize, and let's reassess as we go.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Sarah Lambert Freeman, on deck. M. Free McKenna, I'm sorry. All the damage is a perfect, it's very nice radio, I don't know. Okay.
We all, I'm Sarah Lambert Freeman, I'm in the city of Manami. I'm here. I'm Sarah Lambert Freeman, and I live in the town of Manami, and I have, uh, I have a sister. We, I think, have a lot in common here. Together, we formed this really pretty cool community in Manami, and of late, we have become so, so divided. But now, we share some really important things. We want to see our kids happy and thriving, we want our schools, our community, and everyone to be thriving. COVID has put a hole in so many important things in this area, and it has created a lot of fear. I personally worry about my parents, I worry about my kids, I worry about keeping my business open, I worry about my husband, who can't stop, I worry about the university project. I worry about my own health, I've just been through a fight by cancer, and I bet a lot of you have similar concerns. I know that with a mask optional policy, I can send my school to kid with a mask mask, that's my choice. We all know, however, that that mask won't do much to protect him, but it can do something to protect his friends, his teachers, his grandparents, his mom. He's okay with that. Kids are sticklers for justice though, and I am keenly aware that it's not fair to ask that of him to protect others without getting that same protection in return. What drew us to this community is what draws a lot of people to communities like Manami. The chance to meet neighbors, to be involved in the community where people take care of one another, and surprises, to bring a meal to the neighbor who is breathing. To help someone out of a dish in a snowstorm. This is the Manami that I love. And I think that it's really not too much to ask, that we all wear our little piece of bag, so that the business is tangible. Your kids can play football on Friday night, and their spouses can go teach, and a room full of kids surprises, which is televised. If we really truly care about all of our kids, and I really think we should, we must do absolutely everything in our power to protect them, even if it causes us a bit of inconvenience. And if you've earned your time, please vote for masking at the very least for Manami.
Thank you, our next speaker is Ms. McKinnon, on deck Mitch Ogden.
Hi. Hello. My name is Ms. McKinnon, I live in Downhill. I don't have any kids in the school. The reason I'm here is because my husband died of cancer last year. And being masked and having to stay home all the time really is not fun, okay? And we're all tired of it. And we need to, like, I'm not a medical expert, right? I'm following the recommendations of people who are medical experts, who say that we need to do things to help this spread of this disease. And I'm here to speak up for people who are medically vulnerable. Maybe you feel that your kids are safe, but not everybody in our community is safe. And I'm also here to speak up for our doctors and nurses and medical folks who have to take care of people with COVID, and who are concerned. Somebody earlier mentioned that there's stabbing charges. That's not unrelated to COVID. Okay, there's stabbing charges because our medical people can't stand having to let people die the last 18 months. That's why people are quitting. It's not just here, it's everywhere. And I, I'm inspired, I, I am afraid. And I don't want to give somebody else's opinion, I'm not afraid of myself, I don't, but I'm afraid for other people. And I'm just asking, Kevin, follow the stated procedures of our medical and scientific experts who are saying that we need to be careful of this all again. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mitch Ogden, on deck Abraham Smith.
Mitch Ogden, I got a little sister in Manami that's got five kids here in the city. I doubt it, and that is like, oh, I look around, and I wonder who's going to put a mask on, who isn't? Who's wore masks, who's wore open faces? About that, sense of doubt? I thought that, that's what I'm tired of. Tired of feeling like we're not a town, we're not a city, we're not a community anymore. I'm tired of feeling that we're at odds about everything. Yeah, I think we're both sides of the self-righteous. People walking around, I put on a mask, I'm a public man, I'm a public warrior, I'm pure for science. And I'm sure that my friends who don't wear masks, that I'm standing up for the Constitution and for liberties. Man, we're self-righteous, we're really good at that, all of us are. Also, all really good at fear mongering. We're throwing around things tonight, saying we don't want to be afraid, trying to make the other side afraid. We are all peddling fear, all peddling hubris. I want to be a warrior for something. I just want to ask tonight if we can just be a warrior for our community, for coming together. My grandfather was a poor very father, I don't mean poor like the dad, never made a lot of money. Maybe he wasn't a good fucking man, I guess, he's dead. He's giving a cheerful life, you know? But I learned from him, you do the cheapest, easiest fix. Whether it was, whether it was a fence. Or whether it was a tractor, did the cheapest thing to keep it going, the cheapest and easiest thing. And I know we do not all understand this pandemic. It has come on us, we don't have all the information, expertise, need for sure. Figured out five or 10 years to understand, but we didn't know that. Seems to me that masks, simple and cheap and easy. I sneezed when I was grocery shopping during the pandemic. Masks work. Masks work, let me just say that. That sneeze didn't get on cereal boxes or anything else, it was all right with my mask. They work, they're simple, they're cheap, they're accessible to everyone. And I just wonder, maybe this is a short-term thing, and this is not going to last long, a few years even is a short-term thing. I want to, I want to have confidence, and when this pandemic is over, and, and, and SARS-CoV-2 is going to be with us forever, it's going to be part of our system. Can we fight for the community?
Thank you. Abraham Smith. On deck, Thomas Pearson.
Abraham Smith, 4433 North Peter Street, Los Angeles, Manhattan, in Manami. For a lot for you this week, but let me just say, governance is hard. The important decisions you have to make are never the easy ones. The important decisions are always a careful balance of many different factors. Look at everyone here, this is amazing. We are teachers, and farmers, and scientists, and counselors, and students, and business owners, and doctors, and managers, and trainers, and all eyes here. People from a huge range of backgrounds, with a huge range of beliefs. The one thing we definitely all have in common is that we recognize that our public schools need to be open and safe for everyone. Now, we all have very different ideas of the risks we face. And we all struggle to put those abstract risks into human terms. We all wonder constantly if we are striking the right balance of potential risks and actual costs. How bad will September be? I don't know. Maybe we'll be blessed in our economy spirit, worse than other countries have seen. Maybe we'll be blessed, and our families won't be to travel hundreds of miles to find a free hospital bed during a stroke or a heart attack. Maybe we'll be blessed, and our schools won't have to shut down because of two main teachers and students are in the hospital. But we all know, we all know that blessings come as opportunities and choices. That's how they're disguised. Blessings are opportunities and choices disguised. Because our schools across the country are already open in recent weeks, you have the opportunity to learn from their experience. And you can make the choice of keeping our schools open and safe for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Thomas Pearson, on deck Jen Flanders.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for the opportunity to.
Hold the mic, hold closer. That y'all more.
My name is Tom Pearson, I live in the city of Manami. I have three children in the school district, all of whom are too young to be vaccinated. And I just wanted to come tonight to express my support for Dr. Zanowski. And for the proposed mask requirement to start the school year. This, this proposal is consistent with all the public health agencies at the federal, state, local level. Districts own medical advisors, that healthcare professionals. The goal is to keep children safe and to keep schools open. As I mentioned on Monday, my six-year-old daughter, Michaela, has Down syndrome, and so that puts her in the category of increased risk for severe COVID-19 disease. She's not the only child who is medically vulnerable due to circumstances beyond control. She did not choose to have Down syndrome. Luckily, she was born into a society that recognizes her basic rights to healthcare and education, allowing her opportunities to pursue her potential. Like everyone here in this room, her life has benefited from basic advances in medicine and shared public resources, such as good schools. If the school board chooses to increase Michaela's risk of exposure to COVID-19, and the board declines to follow their own medical advisors and district leadership recommendations for creating a safe, safe learning environment. You're potentially violating her right to a free, appropriate public education, and it will be by statute or the environment law. These are rights protected by federal laws, such as the Individual Civil Rights Education Act, the ADA, and Section 543 of the Rehabilitation Act. The Federal Department of Education's Office of Civil Rights is acknowledging complaints against school districts that refuse to ensure a safe learning environment. Following the consensus and recommendations of public health advisors and federal experts. A temporary universal masking is a simple effective strategy to keep schools safe and open. So I'm just asking the board to support the doctors that Zanowski requests, and I stand with them in an effort to keep schools open.
Thank you, our next speaker, Jen Flanders, on deck Mike Cooper.
Hi. I'm Jen Flanders, I am from Wilson, I'm here on behalf of my nieces and nephews in this district. I'd like to start out by reminding you about the codes that you're violating by imposing mask mandates and vaccination mandates. Should come to that, which we all know is headed toward. 18 U.S. Code 1038 is false information and poses 42 U.S. Code 1986 action for neglect to prevent. 18 U.S. Code 42, or 1035, false statements relating to healthcare matters. 18 U.S. Code 1040, fraud in connection with major disaster. 18 U.S. Code 1031, major fraud against the U.S., but it's also conspiracy against rights and defamation of rights under the color of law. Sir, I'd like you to know that your daughter would be better off with a prophylactic Wirsitin. I'd like to remind you also of the thousands of studies that prove that masks do not eradicate viruses, and definitely not man-made or manipulated viruses. Or how harmful they and the vaccine are, or how many thousands have already died from the vaccine. However, some of you don't seem to care. You truly do not care about the facts. In fact, you apparently care more about getting your money, but I'm not going to remind you of those, I'm not going to list them all because there's thousands. I'm going to pray for you instead. I'm going to pray for all of you, because first of all, the Bible, in fact, Jesus himself states, that if there be anyone who harms a child. It would be better that a millstone be tied around his neck and then be thrown into the bottom of the sea. Therefore, I'm going to pray that first and foremost, you acknowledge God, and you would make your heart right with Him tonight, if you haven't already. And that if you don't, you will be like Zechariah, father of John the Baptist. His voice was silenced until he acknowledged the truth and sovereignty of God Almighty. Therefore, if you are not willing to acknowledge the sovereignty of God and the truth about this so-called health issue, which is really medical fraud and experimentation. If you don't, then I pray that your voices be silenced, so be it.
Our next speaker, Mike Cooper, on deck Ariel Catherine.
Mike from Manami, being a former industrial architect here, I'm just my huge voice. I've heard a lot of opinion and concern, although fact, I would like to speak to the habit of wearing masks. They give you false security. From the National Institute of Health, it says, the physical properties, the physical properties of medical and non-medical face masks suggest that face masks are ineffective to block viral particles due to the difference in their scales. According to current knowledge, the virus, the COVID virus, has a diameter of 60 to 140 nanometers, or a billionth of a meter. While the medical masks have a thread range of 55 to 440 millionths of a meter, which is a thousand times larger. The existing scientific evidence is challenged safety and efficacy of wearing face masks as preventive, preventive intervention for COVID-19. Wearing face masks has been demonstrated to have substantial adverse physiological and psychological aspects. They include hypoxia, hypercapnia, shortness of breath, increased acidity and toxicity. Activation of fear and stress response, rise in stress hormones, immunosuppression, fatigue, headaches, decline of cognitive performance. Brutus position for viral and infectious diseases, chronic stress, anxiety, and depression. By the way, depression numbers for young kids or young adults is up to twenty-five percent last year. Long-term consequences of wearing face masks can cause health deterioration, developing and progressive chronic diseases, and premature deaths. And I'll leave you with this one last note. England announced today that they will not be requiring masks.
Ariel, please hold your applause. On deck will be Nora Moses.
Hi, I'm Ariel Pacarelli, and I live in Monomie Township. I was at the last meeting a couple nights ago, and I've since replied to most, mostly civil discourse that I witnessed. I was struck by a couple of things that feel important to highlight now. Choice. The school board as a democratic body has a choice to make. In a changing landscape, it is crucial to know that you can change your mind based on the most current recommendations. It can be hard to change course, especially in stormy weather, and to admit that previous decisions do not support the best choices moving forward. In a changing landscape, with the most raw human emotions being expressed here about care for family, for children, for safety, and for autonomy to have choices for oneself and for one's family, it can be especially hard to change course if it means letting people down who you want to be sure to represent as your constituents. But my question then is, given the information at hand about this virus and the newer, more contagious health variant, as discussed at the last meeting by your very own superintendent and supported by Amphilmedical Research, is it worth the risk to hold on to your previous decision in this changing landscape that predicts that children in your communities, their families, all the people in these communities are at risk of illness, hospitalization, and even death? Can you bear that weighing on your conscience later, conscience later, if you are wrong now, by not making choices to prevent these catastrophic outcomes? I urge you to take the time to think through what is most important here and make a choice on the side of safety, at least for a little while longer, to understand the landscape a little better and make more informed decisions as you go, and also to show that you are committed to furthering civil discourse and democratic process, ensuring that public schools remain accessible to the public by creating the safest possible environments for all, including those with special needs and vulnerabilities. Even if we can't agree on all the details, I believe that everyone who took the time to show up cares about how this all plays out, that we all want to be free and alive and healthy, and that we want to look out not only for ourselves and our families, but also for each other. Please, risk changing your minds to keep us all as safe as possible so we can meet here again under better circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you, Nora Moses. On deck, Bethany Ristler.
I'm so sorry. Thank you for allowing me to speak and thank you to the school board for your time. I know that you guys see some of these just as simply serving on the school board, and I know you're doing what you think is right for our kids. I appreciate that. I was excited last year when our kids could go back to school in person at the time we didn't have internet on our arm, so getting thrown into that homeschool situation was a bit rough. While I wasn't pleased about all the mitigation measures that were taken, I understood the effort. After a few weeks in school, when kids started getting sent home for quarantines and kids started getting mild cases of COVID, I realized that the mitigation measures weren't really that effective and it wasn't making that much sense. I also started feeling concern for my children's mental health. I had never worried about my kids' mental health before, and in fact, teachers always tell us how happy our kids are when we go in for conferences. That wasn't the case last year. They weren't happy. Emotionally, they were suffering. Socially, they were suffering. It was a strange year, and we had to keep pushing them to go to school. They loved school before. Last year, they were telling me every day, "Mom, I hate school. Mom, don't let me go to school. Mom, I don't want to go to school." It's stuff to get through. Joe, you work for us, and you do an admirable job running the school district. I appreciate that. You answer to the school board, the school board elected by us to represent us. When I go out in public, I know the majority of our public likes the optional mask. I see some of you maskers out there in public without masks, so I know you guys wear that option as well. I don't understand why you're going against the majority here, and I assume it's due to threats from Katie, and I want for sure you should have no power over them. And I want for sure all of you, she has no power over them. We are responsible for raising our children. Schools receiving $12,000 per student this year. In your hearts, you said if the child was sent home on quarantine, they would not receive, they would be, this is your word, excluded from school. So that isn't up in received services. When our child was sent home on quarantine last year, she did not get any classwork sent home. So with this $12,000, if we're not receiving all services, I would like that money back.
Hey, back. Thank you for answering. Dr. Zdowski was under... Would you like to speak to that, Joe, or you don't?
Amy Kleinhorner. Bethany Ristler is next. On deck will be Gabriel Stevens.
Can you hear me? Yes. Okay. I'd like to say something about it. I think that was really rude to talk about Katie Gallagher like that. Talking about board members. Okay, when you talk to somebody...
She's not a board member.
Yeah, she's not a board member. That's right. Yeah, not. But we have a policy. You don't talk bad about anybody when you get up there. Thank you.
The floor is all yours.
First of all, I want to thank the school board for giving the time to hear the residents tonight and draw their decision, and I appreciate the significance of decisions like this. I'd like to ask that the school board consider adoptive plans within the school year with a mask requirement for all students, staff, and desert in the district. Dr. Zdowski and the administration have expressed their concerns with masking being optional because they can see the detrimental impact of opening schools without masks. I don't come here tonight as a parent concerned for the health of children, though that is a concern of mine. I come here to fight as a community member, a city resident, a local employee, and a consumer, a lawyer of local businesses. We love them. We know that masks have been effective at preventing this relevant question. We know that there is a rise of cases in our area, and we know that many other schools who have tried to open without masks have failed. Entire classrooms and even schools are needing to change learning modalities due to the need to quarantine. When we quarantine kids, parents and caretakers must work to stay home, and in many cases, they lose pay. Companies lose employees. They lose productivity. They lose revenue. They also lose consumers. I'm asking you to consider the big picture. Consider that this isn't about criminals and rights and pro or anti-masking. I'm asking you to consider the impact outside of whether or not someone wants to wear a mask. Consider the ripple effect that happens when we don't have a plan in place to prevent this threat. We will not be discussing masks and quarantine if we have a regular and current, a higher vaccination rate. Unfortunately, our area residents are having trouble with COVID-19, creating the need for masking as the less necessary. If we could increase the vaccination rate, perhaps we could do away with masks again. But it's still that we have to do something to keep the schools open and keep kids in person. Kids need to be in school. They need education. They need to be within their bounds. Without masks, that's not going to happen. Please, let's keep the schools open. And one last thing. A few moments ago, an individual shared that England is open without masks. Right. That individual left out one very important point. Vaccination rate in England, eighty-seven percent. The economy, just over forty percent.
That's your point.
Our final speaker is Media Communications Central.
When I look around this room, I know I'm your local editor, and I just want to be clear that this is not entirely. What I'm saying is either opposed or that I don't have anything to do with it. Many of our community members brought this to me to be, which I'm not called a speaker, but I'll do my best, including farmers, union workers, and blue collar people who are working for us every day, makes the community go around.
You are from Monomie.
I am from Monomie. I've been asked to be here to represent parents and people of our community to share how we're seventy percent of us feel about the mask mandate in our school, and I have four boys who are graduated to our elementary school. Masking children is tragic, unscientific, and damaging. Children do not readily require COVID, spreading to other children, teachers, or endanger parents or others at home. This is solid science. In rare cases where a child is infected with COVID, it's very unusual for the child to be severely ill or die. During the time of COVID, governments across the county have sought to restrict the behavior of private citizens groups in ways that many citizens did not have imagined in a year and a half. But how much regulation is too much? Emergency does not create power. Emergency does not increase granting power or remove or diminish the restrictions imposed upon rented or reserved. Constitution was adopted in a period of brave emergency. It grants power of federal government, and its limitations of the power of states were determined in the light of emergency, and they're not altered by emergency. The Fifth Amendment says that no person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without the two presses of law. The Fourteenth Amendment states nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without the process. Citizens can refuse to obey a mandate. In many jurisdictions, governments are not enforcing or lax in enforcing COVID mandates. Law offices have examined, have examined court records. For Wisconsin and Portland, as of today, August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one, no one has been currently prosecuted for violating a COVID restriction and on a personal loan. Like George Rockwell said, "I'd rather die on my feet than live on my knees."
I want to thank everybody. It wasn't perfect, but high and large, very nice job, and I'm proud of our community. I mean, people will talk about the division and that, but this shows me that we really can't be respectful and hear both sides, and for that, I applaud all of you, so thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda, we'll move to the action agenda. Item two A, action to update the S D M A COVID-19 plan. Is there a motion to approve? Just for clarification, the COVID-19 plan, we have two action items. Since I know we didn't have enough of justice for everybody, everybody may not have got one. Item two A is action to update our COVID S D M A COVID-19 plan. Action item two B is action to approve the indoor masking order. We can... Why don't we, since the turnout in this meeting was only a day, a little over a day, I'll have Dr. Zdowski just kind of run through the changes to the COVID-19 plan, and then we can take the motion after that.
Mr. President, the order actually wasn't just introduced by the little smartest insurance group.
It was. Would you prefer they speak to it?
Because if they introduced it, or did broadsword on the general decision, it would have been...
Amy's actual point was on the masking, right, Amy?
Yes, I'm on the masking, and Charlie's hiring more nurses to do, or at least have our contact tracing right in our school district, and so going outside of our school district, it helps, and the director of health, Department of Health.
And I'll reiterate that I asked that COVID-19 plan, we go down there in whole, so that we could cover everything that more members were bringing in, so. If you'd like Charlie to give you the first one, I can, I would, I think, show it to somebody.
Well, I hope you talked about Amy's masking as a not part of the plan, so would it make more sense to get this out of the face before we talk about the plan?
I absolutely concur. We, item four, so we had a again order and approval revision. Nobody asked for the change to be made, so we'll deal with it in a way that's kind of general. Anything you want to add, sir?
I'd be happy to speak to it if they want me to, or however you want to do it, so.
Why don't you address it first, and I'll go over the plan, the amendments.
No matter where we go on masks, I think that it's important that the district personnel do the contact tracing because they will be able to do it in a much faster way, and I believe more accurately as well. And so I think that it makes sense for us to have district personnel doing that. Obviously, the county health department is involved in that process, but just as we did last year, I think it would make sense to have district personnel rather than the county health personnel doing it. So that was the reason that I brought it up.
Thank you. Okay, Joe?
We had a meeting with these school nurses yesterday.
Excuse me, point order. Is there a motion?
No. Dr. Zdowski asked to see maybe we'll talk more first and then do the motion?
No, but I mean, the motion for the contact tracing, yeah.
I did not currently make a motion. I think let's just have you go over the plan as presented, and if there's questions in discussion, we'll go through that.
So we continue to work on this basically nonstop, and in the meeting with the school nurses yesterday, talking about what the expectations are from the county health department, even if we do not conduct the contact tracing, we are still obligated to provide line lists. And essentially, if there's a case in school, we're obligated to share with the health department who the person was and who was around them, and then their contact tracers could then call people and do all that stuff. The problem is, it's such a slow process, and our nurses are ready to do it and get kids back into school quicker. If the health department does it, they're more than likely going to exclude, cast a wider net, and we're concerned about the number of those kids who go in the school. So while it's tempting, and I think, you know, at one point, we thought it might be better to have a health department do it because it's a lot of work, the concern about casting that large net and quarantining the entire classroom or entire team, or whatever that may be, would be even more problematic for our kids. So we can be quicker, we can be more efficient, and we can be more accurate if we take the contact tracing. The other part of the plan, in talking with our staff, our nurses, some of our special education staff, our leadership staff, there are some higher-risk exposure situations, but the default in our plan is for optional masking. That's the way the plan is written. But we have added a section that would require masks for higher-risk exposure situations, which would include singing and specialized healthcare services, such as if we help children with the toilet, especially some children that need toileting and diapering, specialized feeding and medical practices, therapies, and first aid, we would require masks for that type of situation. So those are the only two changes right now being asked for in the plan. Now, the order is a totally separate thing.
Okay, you need to start the amendments. Angie? We can go ahead. Motion, is there a motion to approve the changes in the COVID-19 plan? Yes? Is there a second? Then, Mark, or God. Okay, discussion. Angie?
I guess I would like to ask, without there being an emergency authorization by the governor or anybody?
Um, I guess I would like to ask, without there being an emergency authorization authorization by the governor or anybody, how is it that other school districts are doing little to no contact tracing? And the health department doesn't have a say in how they run their school. The health department just makes recommendations. And why are you putting forward that it's the opposite with us?
Thanks, Angie, and that's been one of the most frustrating things for me and everyone in our school district and the other superintendents in downtown. Different counties have different health officers, they have different county boards, and they have different legal advisors. For instance, some of the counties in Northwest Wisconsin are thoroughly turning over contact tracing, the entire thing to the school district. Or there's, you know, they're not challenging the school district. As you saw from the letter that KT Gallagher shared with the board, and it's been shared with the other boards in downtown county, our health department has already cited the law, and the law, the state law is pretty clear in terms of their ability to quarantine people suspected of having a communicable disease. And it also seems very clearly in state law that we have to cooperate. So unless we want to break state law and challenge law, we really have no choice.
Can you read that state law for everybody here?
Yeah, it's not, it's not a disease.
It's not a disease.
But I'm saying, can you, some of us might not be aware of the state law.
I have, point of order, this is, the community communications was a portion of the meeting where the public could ask questions. Unfortunately, this portion of the meeting, only the board is allowed to talk, it's just the way it is. We are public here, it's a meeting held in public so that everybody can hear the dialogue and discussion with the school board members that are able to ask questions right now. Just the way, the way this meeting works. Questions from the board. Hey, I've got a question. I'd like to provide some clarification on state law as well. Joe, on the line listening, what information would be provided to public health?
A list of the close contacts in school along with contact information.
So what's included with the contact information?
Family contact information.
Would it include masking, no masking, vaccination status?
Are we sure the health department? Yes, it could.
Yeah, it's, oh, why? No, go ahead, you have more clarification, and I've got a little bit of clarification in state law. Go ahead. All right, okay. The state law that Dr. Zdowski is referring to is state law two fifty-two point zero three, the duties of a public health official. I've done a lot of homework in the last week trying to figure out the interpretation of this. It is quite clear, and those of you that were paying attention to the August ninth board meeting, it's quite clear in the case of James versus Hemrick's, which is a Dade County case that the state Supreme Court overturned early June, that the public health official does not have authority to close a complete school. And Dr. Zdowski and I actually have been working back in Portland, trying to get an interpretation. Really hasn't been tested, but it does appear quite clear that the public health official does have the authority to close down cohorts, study like your classroom. Where it becomes kind of gray, and this was according to our caucus attorneys, basically, legislative reference there, which is a completely nonpartisan group, is that I don't know what happens, or they should say they don't know what happens if we're looking at three, four classrooms or say like in, since many of our schools were at a wing where we might be closing down a portion of River Heights Health Mission, or Condon Health Mission. I, I couldn't get an answer back as far as if she had the authority to do that. And we're looking at that level of close down, but it was quite clear that an entire school could not be closed down based on that Supreme Court ruling of James versus Hemrick's. So that's, and it's quite clear actually in that law as far as what the duties are included and what the public health official does have. So. Chris?
I appreciate the legal history on that plan. But one thing you have to remember is that this is pertinent to the discussion we're having. We've already voted on our reopening plan. We've already approved contact tracing. This is just adjusting the contact tracing. We already put in our plan we had last year. So the discussion should be whether or not we're looking to approve Charlie's approach to contact tracing, which will decrease the exclusions for students and affect the classes for parents and for families. So that's the motion that is before us. And whether or not KT can shut down the school is not a tirade to the point. So if we keep our discussion tied to whether or not we want to approve this improved version of contact tracing and health care system in school, that would be my question.
Any other discussion?
Yes. Well, actually, it's not correct. Chris, if you look at the plan, there's two parts that are highlighted. Yes, one is contact tracing, the other one is masking. And like Dr. Zdowski said, higher risk exposures to any specialized healthcare. And then I was curious for any individuals entering SDMA buildings for COVID-nineteen testing. So are we becoming testing sites for COVID?
Thank you for pointing that out, I totally missed that part. That was another one from the school nurses, and as the board knows, we have signed up for the federal testing program. We are just getting the information on it. It's a totally optional testing program. But, and the reason why we have it is so that if kids are quarantined and they come back after repeated quarantine with a negative test, that allows them to get back to school quicker. It also takes down barriers for families. Our understanding is that testing is not going to be accessible this year compared to last year. But the challenge is that if we have people coming in for testing, then, you know, those are definitely people who want to have masks out when they come in to get their tests. So thank you, Tommy, I do not mention that in my summary.
Any other discussion? Look, Tommy, I actually got the first part of mine, but actually, Mr. Freeman, we did actually discuss as part of our COVID plan, the district administrators, superpowers as well, over I actually do make decisions in the event of an emergency like the pandemic. So my interpretation of that plan that we approved actually would give Dr. Zdowski the option to work involuntarily without approval of the board should there be an upset or an emergency. Unless I'm incorrect in my interpretation of that, is that correct? Do you have a point to go?
Clint, I would say that has more to do with administrative policy that the board updated in terms of emergency powers during emergency situations. I do think that we still are under an emergency situation. But we did have a few situations last year where we did that, and the practice that I did was inform the board first and then take action. I do not intend to do that, you know, with this. I don't, I do not intend to do that with masks right now.
But I guess my point is that you could actually, so we really, it's kind of this, and someone's supposed to be changing the current plan we have, because you actually have that authority to go in there and change it at any time.
I don't think that'd be very advisable for my career. I'm willing, I am willing to do it though if that's what the board directs me to do.
Any other discussion on the board? We have two changes, one has to do with subgroups that we're asking that we require. The other has to do with the contact tracing being done by the school rather than the county health department. As Joe mentioned, a lot of it has to do with trying to let the health department remove the testing or like contact tracing, et cetera. Angie?
So can I be correct that the only thing that's changing here is what is highlighted in yellow?
Correct. And the data.
Chris, may I please? Mike?
I was suggesting that we leave it out there for our audience so they can be clear of all the changes. I think that makes sense.
So under the student-staff masks and EPE section, again, the default for our plan is optional masking. There's a highlighted section that says masks are also required for higher risk exposure situations to singing, specialized healthcare services, samples given to toileting, feeding, therapies, first aid, et cetera, and for individuals entering SDMA buildings for COVID-nineteen testing. The pre-seeding section talks about the requirements for masks in school buses. The other highlighted section on contact tracing now reads, the SDMA will conduct contact tracing for any potential COVID-nineteen exposures that might occur during the school day and during school concert activities. All students, staff, are supposed to cooperate with contact tracing numbers.
Any other? Any other discussion or questions from the board?
I would just comment, I appreciate Dr. Joe, you know, the approach to this on this board and discussion, but I know there's different opinions sitting up here at the table, so. I might do agree that generally, this is the appropriate place for us to ask the questions as opposed to each one of us trying to get a hold of you separately. That's something that's so charged for the community. And I know there's a lot of people here who think I'm silly for having a mask on, I'm vaccinated. I, I just feel the same, I think the mask myself, how to prevent spread to others. I can't change the mind of anybody on that, but I do think that these changes make total sense to keep kids in school. So easier, faster contact tracing. If the contact tracing plan from the county changes, that may change things as well, and things keep changing. But as it stands, I think our nurses will be faster, they will have reduced exclusions. Our, our, you know, a whole team of kids won't be excluded as opposed to two or three maybe. You know, and singing activities like that are high projection, whatever's coming out of us. So, you know, I think they make a lot of sense.
Is there a motion on the board then?
Yes, we have a motion. Any other discussion? Amy?
I just want to make sure that we're really on, right now, just the contact tracing, coming back to the school district, right, and the county health department. We're not talking about masking at this point.
We're talking about masks and fire.
The only thing about masking is the specialized use. Nothing about what the discussion is there.
Okay.
That is actually item two.
Any other, if I can, the discussion for one minute. Chris?
This is a comment, but Dr. Zdowski is taking the example of where our staff's efficient use of contact, contact tracing is beneficial first since last year. Maybe in the case of our degrees, we've been facing difficult situations by being excluded. Where are efficient ease of contact tracing one of the very beneficial processes?
I, I can tell you right now, Chris, there were several times where we had either a classroom or even in some of our sports, we had teams where there was an outbreak occurring. And because of our nurses and coaches and athletic directors able to work together, they're able to identify people quickly. There were some situations where an entire team worked school last year for a partial day, but because everyone solicited work so quickly, those students were able to come back because they were able to identify clearly that they were not in close contact.
I have one question. So what specifically changed, because you developed Plan A that we adopted at the last meeting, which included that we did not want to do with the contact tracing? So why now have you changed your mind?
Two things, Angie, one, the night of the meeting, so they developed those options. And a lot of schools, a lot of us are doing that in different counties. The day of the board meeting, we received that letter from KT Gallagher, where she made clear her intentions to push forward on state law. So that was one thing. The second thing is when we started looking at delays and how she would be casting a wide net, we recognized that would cause many more exclusions than we do ourselves.
Chris, you have another comment or question?
This is just a minor clarification, this is Charlie Schneider's amendment to the COVID plan, and so the questions should be directed to Charlie. Of course, Joe adopted that as an advisory capacity, and he has a very good understanding of what I'm on, but the person you should be asking is the person who made the motion, this is Charlie, as to why he's putting this on his table.
Charlie already addressed that. I'll speak to it again, Charlie.
No, he doesn't have to.
I'm, I'm happy to. I'm happy to address them. I think that the county, not, not the county office, but the county, but the school district dominated here in that they pushed it off onto the school district very quickly. It's actually a duty by statute of the county to do, but they didn't do it. The school district took it on and did a very good job. My concern, as has been stated by myself and Dr. Zdowski, is that it will be, it will be a delay in getting, in getting the process done. And it can be a very cumbersome process and take a lot of time. And this will have cost to the district in doing that. But I think in the end, we will have less kids out for less amounts of time if we do it rather than turn it over to, to the county. Because I don't believe, even though I know that they said that they were going to hire some people, I don't believe that they're going to have enough staff on hand to be able to handle the, uh, the numbers that, that I suspect will get.
One question, Joe. Are you familiar with the, with the other three initiatives in the county that are doing, or still unknown and hold fast to the various, uh, contractors?
I can tell you, we're all trying to work through it, I don't know exactly what they're trying to do.
Chris?
The question everybody wants to know usually is how are we going to make work? So it's a question that people like to have answered, how are we going to make work? So is there a plan that is to cast for things to allocate funds from where it comes to come from?
Well, it really depends on what the board decides, Chris. If the board decides to have masks, then we can handle it in-house. It was a lot for our people in-house, but we can handle it in-house, as we met up with the school nurses yesterday. If we have an optional, optional masking policy, we're going to have to have at least two people because they're being so much more intense.
Any other discussion or questions? The board? He's kind of shy, Andy. Does I have a question or? Well, I actually, I guess I'll see. Well, I'm sorry, go. Okay, I, you can make a motion to suspend the rules if you'd like. Go. Typically, the way I'm reading, you just have to have each board member has the opportunity to talk twice up to three minutes on any discussion agenda, or any agenda item. Or, or get the motion. Or, or ask a clarifying question. A board member may ask as many clarifying questions as they want, but as far as statements, so. Sometimes we have to watch because sometimes the questions have statements embedded in them, so we have to be careful about that. But the board also has the opportunity to suspend the rules. And by two-thirds vote in favor, that is suspend the rules and have this regard for it, so.
I would like to make a motion to, to separate these two as separate motions.
You'd like to amend it?
Yes, I don't, to separate both of the changes as separate motions, because I disagree with the, I agree with the contact tracing, but there are some rules or is the other change that sort of pertains to our masking that I think we should not vote on that after we approve or unapprove the masking policy, like for example, singing with a mask on. Singing does require excessive inhaling and exhaling of air, and I wouldn't approve someone wearing a mask singing, but I think that should be separated from the contact tracing.
So you have the amendment to the motion to split off the contact tracing portion. Actually, we'll leave that in the COVID plan and separate all the part that deals with extra mask wearing. Is there a second for that?
Nothing.
Time it? Discussion?
Okay, what I can tell you is that our music teachers are really good at what they do. They've been working with Brian Segwin, who directed our curriculum discussion throughout this pandemic. There are specialized studies in terms of viral spread with singing. Those studies continue to be updated, and our music teachers are keeping touch closely. It's their recommendation that we do this, their recommendation that we do.
So it's their fault?
It doesn't help, it just divides people even more. But anyway, our music teachers are. It doesn't help, it just divides people even more. But anyway, our music teachers are recommending it, and last year, what they did is they don't sing for a little bit, and they keep the room to let the air circulate, which is very problematic, really, once they're in session, is allowing to suck more.
We have an amendment on the floor with a second to separate these two parts. Any further discussion on the amendment, that's presented? Okay, Janet, take Roehlbaum. We'll do a Roehlbaum vote on the amendment. The amendment would be discussed in two pieces, that if we do that, then we would vote on each piece separately, to add to the COVID nineteen plan. Amy?
Clarify exactly what you're saying, please.
So the, what's the amendment, correct me if I'm wrong, Angie, that I have, what the amendment would do was to separate out the two items in the COVID nineteen plan we have in our board docs bag, and you outlined that into separate motions. So instead of dealing with them both at the same time in one vote, we would deal with each one separately, separate votes on each one. Angie, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So yes would be to separate out the vote, and no would be to leave it as is and vote as on its basis. What's the recommended change? Jan?
Chris Freeman?
No.
Mark Filman?
Yes.
Candy Goozy?
Yes.
Lynn Phillips?
Yes.
Carl Palmer?
No.
Amy Riddle Swanson?
No.
Harley Schneider?
No.
Angie Gillian?
Yes.
Steve Siders?
No. Motion fails, the amendment fails by a five to four vote. We'll go back to the main motion now, with the two recommended changes. Those are, I'll run through one more time, that the district would do, masks are also required for all higher risk exposure situations such as singing, specialized healthcare services, examples are toileting, feeding therapies, first aid, et cetera, and for any individuals entering the SDMA buildings for COVID nineteen testing. The second part, the SDMA will conduct contact tracing for any potential COVID nineteen exposures that might occur during the school day and during school sponsored activities. All students and staff are expected to cooperate with contact tracing efforts. That's the motion on the floor, any further discussion?
Yeah, one last. Carl, question? Joe, maybe you did or didn't discuss this with the nurses. In most of the hospitals and communities and counties I'm aware of, you don't have to be an RN to do contact tracing, as long as you've been trained or educated or prepared to do contact tracing. So an expansion is to have to support contact tracing, correct, would not necessarily be an RN's wage or salary, is that true?
Correct. Any further questions or discussion? Okay, Jan, let's go. We'll vote on the COVID nineteen updated plan with the two items that I presented. A yes vote will be to approve it, that and a no vote will be to.
Mine's not coming up.
Okay. Voice vote is, whose, sure has, who has got it, Amy, who has, Chris, Tanya, let's just do it, Roehlbaum. Yes.
Chris Freeman?
Yes.
Mark Filman?
No.
Candy Goozy?
Tanya?
No.
Holly Phillips?
No.
Carl Palmer?
Yes.
Amy Riddle Swanson?
Yes.
Harley Schneider?
Yes.
Andy Gillian?
No.
Lee Siders?
Yes. Motion was approved by a five to four vote, connect those two updated changes to COVID nineteen plan. The next item on the action agenda is action to approve an indoor masking order.
You're not wearing one.
Is there a motion to approve? I can't.
I saw.
Amy, is there a second? Yes. Amy, since this is your motion.
Okay, I'm gonna, I can read the motion out, it's listed, and there is going to be a little change in it, and instead of doing two separate votes on the amendment, it's very simple. The use of cloth-based coverings will be required for all SDMA staff, students, and visitors inside any school facility during the school day. The school office is ordinarily open for business per policy twenty-two, unless six feet of physical distance and you can be sheeted. Accession to indoor masking requirements will be denied for eating, drinking, rigorous physical activity, mask breaks when teachers decide that conditions are safe, or silent activities when students are stationary with at least three feet of distancing, and for other documented medical needs approved by the building principal. The indoor masking order will expire on October 2nd, 2021, unless extended by the district administrator or majority vote of the school board. What was put in there was district administrator instead of just majority vote.
Yes, are you, so that's your motion, Amy?
Yes, I do.
Yes, is that your second, second?
I agree with that.
You second that? You second that? Discussion, any, any discussion on the motion as presented? Tanya?
Yep, I'd like to make an amendment to add just one small word at the beginning that is recommended. So you recommend the use of cloth coverings, Joe, uh, you require by your staff, you recommend students and visitors to wear the masks.
See, you have a motion, an amendment on the floor with a second, and the word recommended. Any discussion? Tanya?
My question would be, what does recommend mean in practice? Because, because I know that my staff, we're struggling with that question right now, and it's, it's a question of, what I might be would recommend would be say, hey, I think it'd be a good idea for you to wear that mask. And I feel intimidated as a student because someone made that statement, and someone else would say that is intimidation, and another person will say that's a recommendation, following school policy. But in that, how, how would we define what, what our staff would be doing as recommending during the class day with their students?
You are recommending that they wear it to be an adult. If they feel that they're not vaccinated, that they need to wear it, that is recommended. I'll tune us in here right now, fabulous dialogue that the superintendent has with their families, that yes, they recommend, the school district knows to recommend that they wear masks, and they recommend some all sorts of that they should try, in regards to fever and checking in keeping with your kids at home. So it's giving the ownership to the adults, to the adults, and it's working with the families, and giving the families the opportunity along with the staff recommending.
So we're not, we're not directly recommending to children then?
No, just a. Anything else?
No.
So maybe you missed, I mean, maybe I was misunderstood, but what conversations can teachers have with students that are or are not recommending?
That's our choice.
That's just my question, for clarity.
Oh, I would say no.
Good man. Any other discussion?
Thank you.
Chris, first, just a question for board member Hugley. If you're going to change it back into a masking optional proposal, but she has to go no under proposal.
I guess I'm a no. The messaging on this has been horrendous since it began. I still wish I was here and not on vacation with my family in Florida. Perhaps from the beginning, it could have been more intentional, honest, maybe, maybe sit and say, hey, this is super hard to come up with, but how can we bring people to be adults and come to both sides? And let's put in some words like recommend, strongly urge, this is what I'm understanding. But instead, we get emails from here, it's a fear of going into Texas, we get, so there's no intentional, there's no, it is either this or it's that. There's no working together on this, there's no trying to kind of on the ground.
Further discussion? Amy?
No, I just wanted to add that Duran is also doing the same thing.
Doctor Zolke?
Couple things. First of all, the plan that the board approved in August night says that the use of masks in the SDMA will be optional during 2021, 2022 school year. For all unvaccinated individuals, we're strongly encouraged to wear masks while attending or visiting any SDMA school facility. So, you know, it doesn't say recommend, it says we're strongly encouraged. Essentially, the amendment would result in an optional masking policy, and if that's what the board chooses to do, that's fine. You know, we heard a lot tonight about, you know, whether masks work or whether masks don't work, we heard a lot about cases of whether or not they went up or down. I'm not concerned, they already, everyone already heard it. For me, it's not political, it's so interesting, because at this time last year, I was being vilified by a bunch of people who are not complimenting me. It is, it's just, it's an hostile situation. I absolutely a hundred percent was behind opening our schools last year, and our goal, like we said as a board, that the board said, I should say, was to have kids in school. And I think we've really done a great job of that goal throughout the pandemic, and I guess, I'm just confused why that goal would change now, because I hate masks, I don't wear one, but I actually have one. And I've seen so much on all sides of this, I don't even want to comment on whether or not I think masks are effective to stop the virus. I think there are some things to think about on both sides. But what I think people cannot argue about is that with the rules the way they are, the laws the way they are, which is like, you know, this whole contact tracing discussion, there is no doubt that having masks required will have a significant impact on our ability to keep kids in school. And I'm not talking about keeping them in school, but not even said that, that may be advantageous on masks, I don't even want to go there, this, or it's going to waste time knowing each other on that. But what I do know is that last September, we had thirteen cases in our student body, thirteen COVID cases, that resulted in about three thousand exclusions, three thousand days of exclusions. I really don't have reason to believe that it's going to be a whole lot different this year. The tool that the CDC gave us, which I thought the rules were super okay last year, and it was so frustrating, the rules have improved, but it is still going to lead to a ton of exclusions if we don't take the edge of the rule. The rule now says that if you are wearing masks, then you can be three feet. Our enrollment roster was, I don't know, twenty-eight hundred or so, we had a lot of students that went virtual, we had a lot of students at state home, a lot of students that did a different educational option altogether. This year, we're projecting back up to, well, that thirty-three hundred range. When we put that many kids back in our schools, we are not going to get six feet in many of our classrooms. Now, there are some, I think in the app, most schools will have six feet. And the way the, the motion, the way Amy's motion is, those kids would not have more masks. There are situations in high school, especially in some of our specialized classes, you know, maybe maybe business class or something like that, where enrollment isn't as high, the teacher might be able to get six feet, the mask would not be needed. So I like that flexibility of our, our plan, but I really caution the board, and I put all this out there, so if you have a chance to read it, hopefully saw it. But if we go off on masking, we should, we should expect exclusions, and that just is not in alignment with our goal of trying to have kids in school.
Okay. On the floor, we have an amendment to the motion where it states that to the use of cloth-based coverings are recommended. Further discussion on the amendment? Chris?
Well, this is just a common text, a point of order. It's not in the spirit of amendment to negate the proposal. This ostensibly negates the proposal and circumventing, especially you would have had regarding the efficacy of the positive attributes of the policies to be able to. I understand that board member Hugley has said that they use the word strongly recommend rather than strongly encourage rather than recommend, but by changing the word to recommend, it makes it an optional policy, which negates the whole idea of the proposal. This is not in the spirit of amendment, it's a negation. So if it's negated, we agreed to the amendment, then a tilt proposal and an object will no longer have any discussion of why and how we want to be reasonable about adopting or not adopting the masking policy. So, it's a point of order question. Do you give?
It is an amendment to the motion, so if the amendment were to pass, there would still be discussion on the main motion. That's it. Was the amendment changes? Amy?
Are you asking about, what do we have, discussion about the main amendment right now, or are you just talking about the amendment?
We're just talking about the amendment right now.
I think another thing that the board should consider is, we did receive a lot of great letters on all sides of this issue, and one of the letters that I really, that really struck a chord for me, it wasn't read, because we just entered them into the record. Let me just find it here real quick. Actually, it was a letter just for the board, and it's by one of our teachers here at the high school, so I'm not going to read it. But the teacher talked about how he has a child at home, and how he hasn't hardly missed a day of work in the last several years. But he knows that if his child in our school is quarantined, he's going to have to stay home to care for that child. Now, some of our children, and I'm lucky, because my kids are old enough, or if they were quarantined, we would just leave them home. But when we came here, you know, eight years ago, you know, my twins were pinners, there's no way we would have left them home. And again, I'm lucky, because my wife stayed home at the time, but there are so many families in our community where if they're little ones, they get quarantined, they're going to have to stay home, and not just our business, but all businesses in the community are going to have those situations. So my concern is that not only would our kids miss school, and even if they're old enough to stay home by themselves during quarantine, it's very likely that at some point during the school year, at least one, if not multiple of their teachers are not going to be there to teach them, they're going to be home with their kids, parent form, in quarantine. With the sub situation right now, if anybody's interested in being a substitute teacher, please see me at the meeting. You can't, you can't hardly find something. We have some great subs, and we will use them pretty much every single day once we get going. But we're going to be in a situation where not only are kids going to lose education when they're quarantined, they're going to lose education opportunities when their teachers have to either be quarantined or stay home to care for their children when their children are quarantined. And I heard from the chancellor at Stowe, I think I mentioned this the other night, I have no Stowe concern about that too, because the number of the professors at Stowe have children in our school district. So their child is quarantined, you know, if I have to leave an eight-year-old home alone, so now they have to miss work, and now the education suffers there. And that's just too, we have all sorts of businesses in our community that will be significantly impacted with an optional mask policy.
Any other comments or questions from the board on the amendment?
I guess the question, Carl, I want to be super clear, I need to know what the vote is. The change to the word recommended applies both to students, hands, faculty, and everybody, is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, we'll vote on the amendment as presented, the change, you have the word recommended in the face of mask policy. Okay, before on the amendment as presented, the change, you have the word recommended in the face mask policy.
Chris Freeman?
No.
Mark Silman?
Yes.
Ryan Lucy?
Yes.
Glenn Moses?
Yes.
Carl Palmer?
No.
Amy Riddle Swanson?
No.
Riley Snyder?
Yeah.
Amy Skellian?
Yes.
David Sayer?
No.
What's the one down?
Four, no.
Four again, five, four. So the amendment passes? Policy, indoor masking order now reads, use of cloth face coverings will be recommended for all SMA staff, students, and visitors while inside any school facility during the school day. And the school office is ordinarily open for business or policy 322. Unless six feet of distancing can be achieved. Exceptions to the indoor masking requirement will be made for eating, drinking, rigorous physical activity, mask breaks, when teachers decide the conditions are safe. For example, silent activities when students are stationary with at least three feet of distancing. And further documented medical needs approved by the U.S. Department. The indoor masking order was issued on October 2nd, 2021. And is extended by district administrator or majority vote with the school.
So should that not say recommended in place of where it says the indoor masking order should say recommendation and in place of where it said up above?
Yeah, I think Tommy had two spots. Did she have it for recommended?
Yeah, I, yes.
She made the initial motion, she asked for two. She said the recommend, the use of face cloth coverings will be recommended. And exceptions to the indoor masking recommendation will be made for eating, drinking, et cetera. That is, the motion is on the floor at this time. Any discussion? And since the motion was amended, we do start over with a brand new clean slate for discussion plans by board members. Any discussions? Is there more discussion? Chris?
Yeah, I just want to, I guess, one of the ways was the tenor of the, you know, when you guys came and spoke to the board and to the community. I really, my heart really went out to a lot of people that are in our community that we really need to understand that when we refer to, you know, pediatricians as recommending things that hurt children, that our male advisors are making recommendations that hurt the kids in our community. Or our school nurses give recommendations that are hurtful for our children. I think that we need to really reflect a little more deeply on what that people do for our communities, for our children. And I believe that happens also, I do have comments on the board as well. When board members choose to disregard the recommendations of our healthcare providers. When they choose to disregard the recommendations of our health officials. That's assuming that they're making recommendations that are causing harm. And a lot of the discussions happen.
Quiet, please.
And this, I think, is really important, is that it makes our pediatricians, the healthcare workers, the health advisors, the people that work for public health, makes them the enemy. I mean, like I, I just want to make it clear to people on board that that's not okay. I mean, my dad was a pediatrician, his dad was a pediatrician, Dr. X is our pediatrician. And their recommendations were supposed to be for our kids.
Quiet, please.
You don't have the opportunity to make the good guys into the bad guys. And I hope that going forward, when this discussion happens again, a lot of mask policy, and then courageous healthcare workers come forward again to make recommendations, we won't treat them as the enemy.
Quiet, please. Any further discussion? Dave, again, Clint first, and then since we're preaching.
Quiet. Actually, I'm going to pledge my Mr. Schneider from the August 9th meeting. Because Charlie actually made reference to this after we took the vote on this the last time. In August 9th board meeting, once we vote on this as a board, and those of you that are following policy 165, 165 subsection 2, number 3, once we vote on this as a board, we are expected to support the decision regardless of what side the vote we were on. Win or lose, and I really do think that this should apply to the superintendent and his lead team as well. Because quite frankly, since we took this vote on August 9th, we have been harassed, subjected to criticism, threats in the past as board members. And I'm done with it. It doesn't represent our community well. Those of you, many of you know that I'm a proud alumni of this high school, UW Stell. And I'm ashamed of some of the behavior that I've received in some of these other board members. I don't care what's at the fence there on. But this is a very difficult time for local boards, whether it's the school board, township board, whatever. Things are dividing people so badly. It has taken a toll on us professionally, and also with our children, and personally. So once this vote is taken, we all need to get behind it, try and support our schools, and our superintendent, and his lead team, and all our teachers and our kids the best we can. So I'm not preaching, it's not Sunday.
Okay, I just want to say something. I, my personal standpoint as chairman of the board, but I think you're on mine. And give me out. Dr. Zdolski, he has made a lot of decisions that aren't popular with people. But I truly feel that if that's interesting. The kids in the school, they're mine, they're all, they're tough, and do I always support them? No. I was behind pushing for the optional face mask for summer school on the primary portion of it. I'm not a big fan of masks, you know, it's a secret. But Dr. Zdolski is one of the best administrators we've had for a long, long time. What he's done with the district from a financial standpoint and with the staff that we got here, the call on his staff, that helps to sort of so I will defend him no matter what. Please. I will defend him on that.
Okay, any other discussion? Any other hand up?
I would just like to say that this is not an easy decision. All right, let's say this. All of you love football, right? Love to go out to see the world, play.
Quiet, please. Quiet, please.
I can just, all of you, when you talk, and you can be respectful to me, please. Okay.
Quiet.
What I'm concerned about is that all of you want our kids in school. Our achievement scores are in the bottom. We want our achievement scores to go up. And we have exclusions from the kids. Our football team doesn't get to play. All of these things can happen. And it's not about football. It's the community that's just about football. So not only is that, it's the community that's like, we may be put at a, not a stop. I am very concerned that our achievement scores are going to continue to go down if we do not have safety for our kids. That is my concern. So, if our kids are out of school, and you have to stop them from there.
Again, we can't be quiet.
And I am really tired of the discipline of being harassed, and I have gotten harassed a lot.
Okay. Please, in the audience, you guys have done really good.
It has nothing to do with any of you. It's our kids, not you. Way it's simple.
I think we're there. I will, if we cannot maintain discipline and be respectful, we're going to clear the room. This is a high point. And I don't want to do that. I really don't. You guys have no idea how these board members even have votes yet, and you're going to upset, so please.
I'd like to make a point as well. And I said this Monday night, and some people in this room likely got horrified by this email. Where I did share that while the plan is in place, it's planned, and I will support that plan while it's in place. And at the same time, people had emailed and said, what's changed? Well, some things have changed. Not everyone has to agree with it. But we have seen some pretty bad stuff rolling across the Southern United States. I'm a nurse, that's my background. You don't have to trust me any more than anybody else. I'm not an expert. But when we get new information, we as the board have to consider it. And so we may have to change the plan again. Right? It could be that we can get rid of all this stuff in December. It could be if there's a surge at our hospital and they can't take patients, we have to come back and have another discussion. And I think most board members here understand that. That we have to make decisions with the information we have at the time, and it continues to change. So no plan, including tonight's, will be final, and we have to understand that.
Okay. Quiet. Okay. Dr. Zdolski?
Hey Carl, thanks for bringing that up yesterday, you put it to the punch. And if board members want to direct me, definitely, that's fine. But when the plan was approved on August 9th, we made it very clear at that time that we were going to continue to study what was happening in the South. And the three, I put it clear in my Facebook message here last night. The three reasons why this came forward in terms of my perspective. One, were the rising cases. There's no doubt that cases are rising and upcoming. And across the state. When you look at the case counts, today we're at 14, or sorry, 17, 10 across the state. Seven-day average is 14, 17. The last time our seven-day average was that high was January 29th, and we are on the way down, which was great. And we got to February, and I think about the middle of February, we didn't hardly have a case in our schools. Before that, the last time that we were at 14, 17 per seven-day average was September 18th. And it was shortly after that that we moved everything to six feet. We changed everything that we were doing because we had all these exclusions. And we were on the way up, and it got really bad. We had to close the high school for a while. We are on the way up now. I pray that it's not going to go as high as it did last November. We're definitely, you know, almost a whole month ahead of last year's curve. I'm hoping that, you know, with vaccination rates and things like that, that it won't go as high. But we are on the way up. So there was very good reason for why I shared this information with the board. And unless the board wants to grab me, otherwise I think it's my job to advise the board if I think our policy is not going to be sufficient for our goals. Maybe that's what we're to do, is set a new goal for helping handle the pandemic, because I'm still operating under the idea that we want to try to keep kids in school.
Mark, do you have your hand up?
Yes, I do. I just wanted to comment on the football thing. Being a football coach, I would not have voted the way I did if football was the only thing that mattered. So, to that comment. And then I also just want to thank the school district for providing us with these mental shares.
Any other discussion?
I would like to just read one from one letter, one little crap that stood up to me. That's why I'm voting no. I'm voting tonight. I know it's unpopular with half the crowd here. But this parent wrote, nobody knows my child better than me. I am his advocate and his protector. I decide what he does and does not need to do medically. Last year, he compared me at school and eating lunch at his desk alone similar to what he imagined jail would be like. I cannot tell you how depressing it was last year, dropping my son off for school and seeing no smiles or laughter. Mental health needs to be higher up on your priority list is far more damaging than not wearing a mask. I concur completely. I will, there's no condition under which I would vote for my child or any of your children to wear a mask. I think it should be a parent decision. It should be optional, and my vote will stay as such.
I just want to clarify my position. I voted no on the wording to change it to recommendation. My reasoning behind that was it was my intent to vote no on the entire policy. And so I saw a reason to change it to recommendation. If it comes to vote the way it is, as in my position, I will support it if the word recommendation enters. But that is why I voted no on direct me, on the wording to change it, if I intended to vote no.
Charlie?
I would like to propose an amendment. On the second line of the policy, after the current statement, I would like to change the word unless to when. And I would like to remove the district administrator part of the final sentence. I don't think that's fair for an administrator to put this on him. I think this should be a word, when it changes.
Can you read it, Charlie, as it was sound?
Yeah, I'll skip the current statement. Start with and visitors while inside any school facility during the school day. When six feet of physical distancing can be achieved.
Pretty whole thing, I can't, I need to look at the context a little bit. The right, the use of cloth face coverings will be recommended for all SMA staff, students, and visitors while inside any school facility during the school day. Example, when the school office is ordinarily open for business or policy 322. When six feet of physical distancing can be achieved. Correct. Was there another part as well?
Yes, and then removing the last thing about the, that he had about the district administrator.
So we have amendment on the floor for a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Amendment fails for a black and a second. Back to the main motion. Anybody want to have one more time in? Okay. No further discussion?
Would you read it one more time? It's been a long night, Dex. I just want to make sure I'm hearing what I'm hearing.
I'd like to make a recommendation. I, I don't know, who the board is adding this, I think. Maybe it's not the whole thing. I want to sleep with the plan as it is. Instead of approving this mask order, which is not a mask order, maybe someone just votes no, and then the pilot stays as it is. It's kind of silly to have a mask order ordered in the same thing that's already in the plan. Unless someone has something different they think.
Any further discussion? So would the appropriate motion then need to place this on the table? I know it's a place, uh, to vote indefinitely. So the motion that they made is standing indefinitely, this motion, is there a second?
A second, Dan.
Yep, this motion, yeah, is not, I believe, not discussed. Think more discussion? Oh, it definitely, it definitely does require a lot of discussion. Is it two-thirds or a majority?
I think it's two-thirds.
Anybody that's really, really good at politics?
It's two-thirds. We've been talking earlier in the spring.
It's a majority vote. So the motion is to postpone indefinitely, requires a second, is debatable, is not amendable, and requires a majority vote. So motion by Clint? So motion by Clint, was there a second?
I am. Second it.
Angie, we have a motion and a second to postpone indefinitely. Question, any discussion? Seeing none?
Chris Freeman?
Yes.
Mark Philman?
Yes.
Brian Dusby? Yes. Glenn Moses?
Yes.
Carl Palmer?
Yes.
Amy Riddle Swanson?
Yes.
Riley Schneider?
Yeah.
Andy Skilling?
Yes.
Dave Sager?
Yes.
We got a, we have a small, a basketball. Okay, Karen, I just want to say to everybody on both sides, I know this is a contentious issue. We see headlines all over the country about how cities are prone, police involved, and things like that. I guess it will continue to be difficult if there, if it's, if it really, really go bad, then I hear you. All right, last motion, we're here. Where are these, they're sound? Lot of all of them, say, I'd say I. All of them, you stand there, thank you, guys.